For people for the chamber board. She's on the nominators. Yeah, I haven't talked to her yet, but I know Christie. Cause she was out in town. I was just curious, she brought up to you about announcing something over the radio for chamber stuff. Oh, how's your life going? Yeah, when I saw you, I got all excited. I'm like, I see the puppy. You have a few minutes.
We'll call this meeting of the Public City Council to order on January twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty five at six p.m. Reminder, before we begin the meeting, for everyone to please silence your phones and best for the meeting process. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Elpantner?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Mayor Carrington?
Here.
Councilmember Braver?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Tutter?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
And if everyone could stand and I'll ask Gina Davis.
I would like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is approval of the agenda. And we've got a consent agenda again. And so consent agenda has action memorandum number twenty five dash zero one three and zero one four, accepting resignations of certain Board of Information members and then also reappointing members that wish to continue and then having, I think there's one new actual nomination. Now, if we in the consent agenda, if we approve the agenda as it is, that could happen as we put the agenda. So what's the issues with the council?
Second.
Okay, it moved in second. Yes, Councilman Hoover?
Yes, sir. Under item I, I was wondering if you could put all of the light items under one instead of doing a check in memorandum under the dispensary licenses or the.
Okay.
So that will be.
Let's see, zero, zero, nine, ten.
Two, yeah, two, three, four. Seven, eight, and ten.
Okay, so you want to amend the agenda to group those together as well?
Yes.
Second, yeah. Yeah. Is there any discussion about that? All right. Madam Clerk, if you could call a roll for the amending of the agenda.
Councilmember Tutter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoover?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Braver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Elpantner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, so that is amended. Is there any other discussion on approval of the agenda? Madam Clerk, if you could call a roll for approving the agenda as amended, which should say also includes the minutes from January sixth and January eleventh.
Councilmember Hoover?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tutter?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Braver?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Elpantner?
Yes.
Nations, Communications, Appearances, don't get me any elected officials or Board of Information members that I recognize. The audience, next we have the Palmer Police Department, Chief is here, okay. Is there a square in a few officers or promotions?
All the above.
All the above, all right. Take it away, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Chief Shelton, and I'd like to introduce you first to Carter DeBock. He is our newest, he is our newest Reserve Officer, Police Reserve Officer. He was hired, what's it, about a year ago?
That's correct, yeah, about a year and a half ago.
About a year and a half ago. It takes quite a bit of time to get him up through training. He's just completed recently all of his training and stuff, so we're gonna swear him in today. He's been riding and now he's fully uniformed. Next, I would like to introduce Richard Clark. He is our, one of our newly promoted patrol sergeants. He was an officer, he's been with us for several years. Nick White, come on up. Nick has also been with us several years and has recently promoted to the rank of patrol sergeant. And then last, but certainly not least, is Luke Zipski. He's been with the department, started with us as a dispatcher, moved away for a year, a little over a year, and came back as a, as a patrol officer and went through all the ranks of sergeant and worked as a detective and is our newly promoted. By the law enforcement code of ethics.
By the law enforcement code of ethics.
Thank you. They've each selected someone to pin the badge on them and help, help with that. So Luke, I believe you have your boys coming up? Sergeant White? And then Carter DeBock? And Sergeant Richard Clark?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and we'll go ahead and take a break for congratulations. So we'll take a break for photos and congratulations.
Yeah, one or the other, right?
All right, remind me to hear this back home. All right. Okay, we'll come, come back from the break. Next, we have reports, city manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start off, start off with the good here. I just want to bring to attention, also in the, the written report tonight, that members of the MTA, you know, our, our staff out at the MTA Event Center has been dealing with some, some strife, I guess. Normally, we have two compressors that keep the ice cold. We can switch back and forth from compressor to compressor and do maintenance on the other one. This past year, one of those compressors has failed, having us, we're resorting to have a single compressor. And there have been times where that single compressor has failed, or parts of it have failed, requiring staff to spend the night at the Event Center to, just to keep it, to nurse it along and keep it going, keep the ice up and be able to, to continue with our ice out there. The staff did find, likely in somebody's backyard under a tarp, forgotten, long forgotten about, a couple of parts for two new whole compressors. And we purchased those compressors for pennies on the dollar. We've restored one of them and it is now, as of a week ago this past Friday, it's been operating as our second backup compressor at the, at the Event Center. Well, the report right now is that it's not even leaking any oil into the refrigerant, which it generally does, which they generally do as they start to wear out a little bit. So that's, that's excellent news and I just want to applaud the, the dedication and perseverance of the, of the Event Center staff out there. Okay, now the not so good. I'm very disappointed in, in council's treatment, treatment of the staff members. The staff members have said, in their words, that coming in here and speaking to you is like going to a confirmation hearing on Capitol Hill in Washington, D.C. They get, they feel undermined. Staff feels like that they're, that they're not supported, they have no support from council and that you're just constantly barraging them with, with mistreatment is what it, what it feels like. What I would tell you, from my perspective, is that if one does it and nobody says anything, that's, that's, silence is consent. So the silence of those of you who support the council members, or support our, our staff and say nothing about their mistreatment, you're consenting to it. And that is the feelings of staff right now. Staff is here to provide you factual information. We're here to support you. We're here to give you information on which to, to make good decisions on and we're here to execute those decisions in which you make. We are your staff. If there's anybody to be mistreated on that staff, it's, he sits in this seat right here. That's me. I, I, the buck stops with this seat, with, with the way that staff performs. If staff is not performing in the manner in which you need them to perform, that's my doorstep. You bring that to me. That does not go to staff. And that's all I have to say about that. There's one other item I'd like to bring to your doorstep as well. Since I've sat in this seat, I've sat in this seat now for about three months. And from day one, I've been barraged about the way we pay, the way we pay our, our, the way we pay our invoices. Paying invoices is an administrative action and the administration does it very well, in my opinion. But this is, this goes to the very core of trust and confidence in, in the city manager and the city staff as a whole. So I'm gonna break open that administrative, that administrative action for you to see, for, for the public to see, so that you can, you can know that we're doing it responsibly. Perspective matters here, at least from my, from me. My perspective, I, I, I learned about all this, following budgets, creating budgets and, and paying invoices through a publicly traded company. If you don't know, a publicly traded company is regulated by the S E C. The S E C, the company that I worked for was traded in, in two different countries. So there's two different S E Cs you have to, you have to deal with. Every dollar is accounted for twice. And by the end of my tenure there, there was a third company that joined from the continent of Australia. So there's three S E Cs, so every dollar was accounted for three different times. So when you sign an invoice, it means something, it means a lot. It means that you have gone through that invoice line by line and verified every charge of that invoice. When you put your signature on that invoice, that invoice goes from a piece of paper with some words and numbers on it to being a legally obligated debt to the organization in which it is sent. You know, if it comes to the city of Palmer and I sign it, that means that I have verified every single line on that invoice. Everybody in this room does that. When you go to a restaurant and you order something before you pay the bill, do you look at the bill before you pay it? It's, it's natural, it's what we do. And, and I'm not spending my money on this. I'm spending the public's money. I'm spending the money of the people of Palmer and I owe it to the people of Palmer to do my due diligence on every single invoice that comes in front of me. Period. There's three ways to do this. I can, you know, to pay these invoices. I can see an invoice, and I'm referring specifically to the, to the city attorney's invoices. I, I can, and it, and it, on these invoices are mentioned specific council members. So when it says council member X, I can say, oh, it must have happened. Sign it off and send it along. I promise you that doesn't happen. I promise you, that doesn't happen. When I sign that invoice, you know, three options. I, I can send it along. The other option is to call council member X and say, hey, did you have this conversation with the city attorney? Sure. I, I'm, I'm not gonna hound everybody down on the phone. That takes a big part away from my day, takes a big part away from your day. So what we choose to do is we choose to do it online. It, it gets cumbersome on our part as we go through Adobe, the Adobe program. We put a signature block next to every, every individual council member that's consulted. And everybody puts a little, a, a little verification on there that, that it's verified and then I can reasonably pay the invoice, knowing that the invoice has been verified. It's, it's the simple way, it's the easy way and it's the right way to do things. This is a hill I will die on. This is my integrity at stake. I am not going to put a signature on a piece of paper on an invoice that I don't know is true.
Can I, can I interrupt? I'm not, I have, I'm not sure what is even being discussed right now, but I do want to clarify to the public that there has been no communications between the manager and myself challenging the integrity of my invoices. So I think if I.
Okay, this is, this is.
So I wanna clarify that piece and, um.
Yes, this is the manager's report, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. We're talking, you're referring to a procedural reference.
Yep, and this is not something that has happened between the attorney and myself. This is, this is something that's happening between the council and myself. I, I, I hold the, you know, the attorney at the utmost confidence. I think you're, you know, I, I have every, I have every confidence in you that, that it's correct. But as a procedure, the way that we do invoices in this city, that is how it's done. If we receive, and, you know, I'll, I'll go to the, you know, we have Alaska's best water and coffee and to, to pull that vendor in. They, we have a water cooler in multiple different buildings across the city. Every department head who has a building with that cooler in it signs that invoice. It goes to every department head to verify that they are being charged and it's, it's just, it's a simple procedure. It, it's NAPA. When Public Works goes to, goes to NAPA and orders parts for different departments, every department that they order parts for signs that invoice. It's just part of the verification process. It's, it's the way that we do things in the city of Palmer. And it is administrative action. I, I just believe, I believe very strongly in integrity. I really do. And I'm not going to, to compromise it. I, I just believe that, that this is how we do things. One last item on the manager's report. City council, city manager hiring process. I have an update for you. I will have an update from the H R company on the, on the background checks that are currently being performed. I'll have that by the end of the week, I'll have an update. I should have the, the completed background checks at next week at some point and then we'll add them to the, to an agenda. I think that the agenda on the next meeting looks pretty light and I think we should be, I think we can consult with the H R company at the next, the next regular meeting and then go from there as far as selection process and, and scheduling interviews. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. I wanna start with a comment and then maybe a question for the manager, so. One of the things I think is, and I think most of you knows that our manager's from a military service background and the military takes very seriously the chain of command and that's, for him, that's very serious about, it's his job to work with the employees under him and, you know, and discipline them if, if needed and direct them as needed. And I guess my question was gonna be to help change a little bit of culture, shall we say, is one of the best things we could do would be to make sure we're trying to be polite and, and ask the way we ask things and, and considerate, you know, of the manager and of the employees. Is that, I'm, I'm just looking for a starting point to make sure that I, my, my actions will change and as, as an encouragement for the other council members as well.
Absolutely. I, I mean, we're, we're leaders in this room. Leaders lift people up. That's what leaders do. You, you, you bring people up in public and, and you chastise in private. That, that's a general axiom. There are times. That, that's a general axiom, there are times for chastising in public. I don't think it should be a general rule, but, but there are times. And, and for those, and for anything that needs to be done, that comes to me. If there's anything that the city is not doing right, that's me. That falls on my shoulders. That's, the, the, the staff is not, is not hiding anything from you, there's no conspiracies. We're doing everything right to the best of our knowledge. And that goes from librarians to police officers, to the public works folks. Everybody here is doing their best for the city of Palmer. And trying to bring the city of, trying to lift up the city of Palmer, nobody comes here to do a bad job.
Okay. Questions of council for the manager's report, uh, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna say, um, you know, thank you for supporting the, the staff, but I, I am a little curious as to what, um, maybe it might just help, I, I just can't remember a time when we've had staff in, in this room that we've treated them differently than we have in, in, in his, in the history of that since I've been on the council or been watching council. I mean, I don't mean to say like I'm, my head's in the sand, I'm just curious as to what, you know, do you have to, like, are you able to, I mean, are, are we being too tough with our questions? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of like what, uh, you know, what you're referring to, I guess.
Mister manager?
Well, just like we tell our kids, it, it's not what you say, sometimes, it's how you say it. You know, it's, it's sometimes it is what you say, but sometimes it's, it's how you say it. You know, please goes a long way, thank you goes a long way. And, and questions designed to, to undermine or to catch somebody are, are just, no, that's not acceptable in my mind.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and, and I'm, hopefully that, you know, the staff, when they, when they come to us, not getting the, the feeling that we're trying to trap them, you know? But there, there are certain times when, when, uh, just with anybody where, you know, they may, you know, we have questions about why things are done a certain way, and I'm hopingly, or, or, you know, why was this done and not this other thing? Hopefully that's not, you know, um, the, the hangup, because, I mean, we are, we're a legislative body for the city and we do have to ensure that everything's running well. And we're not trying, you know, hopefully when we, we do those, those questions as to like, you know, how come this was done that way, that we're not directing it, you know, to the staff member in particular, but we're trying to inquire, 'cause a lot of times we get feedback from the community as far as, you know, hey, why did this happen or why did that happen? And, um, and just, and if I can just, you know, say, you know, say about the, the, the city attorneys, um, I, I, I think for, for us, I mean, I, and, you know, I, I, I think I've received two of those invoices that I've signed, um, so far. And, you know, when, when we met about that and, and, you know, I think, you know, for, for a lot of us, it was just a, a change in the, in the way that was, it was done administratively, because it went from being done one way to another way. And, you know, my only complaint with that is that it, it resulted in, in a contractor of the city being paid late. Quite a bit late. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about is this, I'm, I'm okay with us doing a system that, that ensures that we're, uh, spending taxpayer money wisely. Just wanna make sure that it's done in a way that is coordinated with the contractors, whoever that may be, and is done with proper notice and is done in a way that, that is in, is making sure that we ensure integrity while also making sure that we're not, you know, not paying people on time where their, their might, their personal lives are, might be affected by it. 'Cause I, I'm a contractor and I live in that world, and so, you know, if clients don't pay me on time, I, I, I feel the pain. So I, I, I understand it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mister mayor?
Uh, yes, Mister manager?
One more thing for, for Mister Tutors, um, to answer, we welcome tough questions. We need the tough questions. That's the way that we, we, you know, we need to bring you the information. If we're not bringing you the information, then we need to fix that. You know, we, we need the tough questions. We welcome them. And to answer, um, the other piece, um, there's been, looking back through the records, there's been two payments that have been made late to the city attorney. Uh, one in April, and one in June, to, to my, to my knowledge.
Council member Hudson?
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to request that councilman Best, um, take his phone off the dais and turn it off and put it away, please. Not on his phone during meetings, it's disrespectful. Also.
Uh, council member Best?
Um, I actually have my phone on for a photograph that is on there of, of some messages in support of the manager, and I'd like to have the, the floor to be able to express that. As the manager had suggested.
So.
Okay, fine, thank you.
So council member Hudson?
So
Do you, do you wanna yield the floor to Mister Best at this time?
He can make his statements now, or I can make my statement now, whatever you, you would like, Mister Mayor. Um, you're the head of this meeting, so I'll respect what, what your wishes are.
Okay. Well, uh, go ahead and continue, we'll just kind of put this other matter on pause.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Yes, so I reached out to you, you Mister manager, the first time that this Adobe signed document was sent by your assistant. And I emailed you as soon as it was sent, because it was concerning to me that this entire council was to sign a document that was not in front of any of the constituents, that was for all of us to sign. And I brought it as a concern as a possible violation, because we were all signing a document behind the constituents' backs that weren't a part of a contract that was already originated. And when I messaged you and said that this raised several concerns, I have the email here, so anybody's welcome to come read it on break. You responded back and asked me what I was even talking about, that you didn't know. I have the email here. So then I emailed back and brought it up, what the concerns were about this Adobe document, that this is how, never how we have paid our city attorney, and that if you wanted to bring these changes that needed to be brought before the council for all of us to approve, because she's our contracted employee. So then again, for everybody's transparency, I messaged again last week, or a week and a half ago, on January sixteenth, asking to confirm that our city attorney was set to be paid on time in her pay run. I then received a response back. I have not seen invoice from attorney John. So then I responded back and said that our attorney, this council's contracted employee, emailed the invoices to his assistant as was requested, and the invoice numbers as requested, and then was told, oh, the assistant's out of town, so we'll pay her when she gets back. Our contracted employee, again, not being paid. So then you emailed me back, after then I said that this isn't okay.
Council member Hudson, do you, do you have a question for the?
Oh, I have a question, thank, I'm leading up to a question, thank you. Um, so then I said, so then you responded to me, which I could take as an attitude, telling me maybe a public discussion at the next meeting may be necessary. So, what I'm saying is that this is deeply troubling. You have held our contracted employee to a higher standard for invoice approval than we do for the city's annual budget. Not every council member has to sit here and approve the annual budget. Somebody can be missing from the meeting, but every council member has to approve her pay? This delay appears now to be retaliation, which I brought forward to you. Especially considering that no one on this council has chosen not to sign the Adobe document necessary to pay her. You have claimed there's disagreement among council members regarding the payment, which has led you to now withhold payment unless every council member signs off. Let's be clear, as the council's employee, you are tasked with executing the directives of this council, not imposing your personal views on how our contracted employee is compensated. We did not ask you if you felt comfortable paying her. You decided that on your own. You work at the direction of the majority of this council, not one or two individuals. So my first question is, did you bring an amendment to the city attorney's contracted pay run with the Adobe document?
I don't understand, what's the amendment for?
To amend how we pay our contracted attorney, our contracted employee. Did you bring an amendment to change how you pay the employee?
What, what would I be amending?
Mister Mayor, if I may?
Yes, council member?
Asking all of the council to sign an Adobe document to approve her pay is changing the way that our contracted attorney is paid. That is an amendment to our attorney's contract.
Since this is about me, without my input.
Madam attorney, would you like to?
Um,
Jump in.
I can finish.
Yes, uh, i- if, if I may, um, I have a, a request and a suggestion. It sounds to me that there's a, two particular issues being discussed here. There's, um, the manner of presentation and, and questions of professionalism regarding communication to the city manager, and then there's actual process regarding my invoicing. Um, and I'm not a huge fan of that being articulated, uh, with, at all detail at the moment. Uh, I also am on the agenda for an executive session for my performance review. So, um, with the council's permission, I would suggest that conversations regarding my specific, um, pay and the process for how to do it could be something we could address at my evaluation. But anything that has to do with the manner between, you know, engagement with your council and city managers, not in my business, but the topic related to process could be something discussed in my evaluation since it pertains to my contract. That's just a suggestion.
All right, uh, council member Hudson?
Yes, thank you, I'll take that into consideration with my statement, thank you.
Okay, um, is it, council member Hudson, do you have more?
Yes, thank you. You, uh, Mister manager, you do not set the rules for the city, the council, or the employees we hire to serve, us, the council. So with this, perhaps it's time at the next meeting I bring forth a resolution, because at this point, I know what your comments are about, and I know that you know that we know what's going on. And we have, I have reason to believe that you're working on behalf of department director, department directors and personal acquaintances rather than working directly for this council with things that have been brought forward in the last two meetings. As a council, we deserve full transparency in your actions. Moving forward, I suggest that maybe we receive an Adobe document detailing your work before each pay run. Then all of us would need to sign and agree on two things. First, that we have directed you to perform the tasks in question, and second, that we believe your work was done completely incorrectly. If we do not agree and sign off on the document, then perhaps you wouldn't get paid on time. How would that make you feel? I suspect you wouldn't appreciate that scenario, because that's not how you agreed to be compensated when you accepted the interim position. You cannot unilaterally choose how to compensate our employees, and our attorney is no different. Sorry, Sarah. These are our employees, and the city manager does not dictate terms of anyone's payment without the direction of this council. We as a body set the direction, not department directors, not personal interests, not certainly, not your inter- individual interpretation of what you believe is best. It is time to align your actions with the direction of this council as it should be. Furthermore, I've emailed you repeatedly asking for our employees to be paid on time, only to be told you didn't receive invoices. However, people were in your office and confirmed that to you the day before, so I don't buy it. So please, can you tell me again why our employees are not being paid on time?
Mister, Mister manager?
First off, the city attorney is not an employee of the city. The city attorney, uh, works for an L L C, which, uh, which contracts with the city. So that would be the same as any other contractor working for the city, as in an engineering company, as in any other contracted provider for the city. So that it's not, she doesn't have the, the employee protections or the employee benefits that the city offers either. So that's, to call the city attorney as an employee is kind of a, a misnomer.
Council member Alcantara?
Yeah. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, Mister city manager, uh, if that, if that was indeed the case, we'd be signing off on H D L's invoices and other contracts invoices. I mean, we have a city manager for a reason, I agree with what you said, the buck does stop with you. I also wanna associate myself with the remarks of the deputy mayor. I've been here three years, I don't recall a time ever treating a department head with anything less than respect, or ever giving them difficult, I mean, if we bring them difficult questions to answer, they should be able to answer them or get back to us. They're being compensated very well, our department heads are being compensated well. And they should be able to, uh, take some questions here at the dais and be able to get us answers and get yourself answers. We should go through you when we have an issue, I don't have an issue with the department head, but if we have an issue with them, we should go through you and not go to them directly or not, uh, or not maybe, uh, hurt their feelings, I suppose, at the dais. I mean, I, I'm trying to reflect back, and I'm usually pretty good at memorizing and remembering things. I can't recall a time where I had anything but respect for whether a police chief, fire chief, finance director, uh, community development director, uh, you know, public works director, et cetera. So if there's a time, I'd love to be shown an example of where we're too harsh on a department head or any other employee of the city. I'm gonna have to touch on the invoice thing a little bit, because I did call the city manager and said, hey, I wanted to do this thing, but it's not working, and, oh, by the way, I'm not even on this invoice, so why are, why am I, uh, approving this invoice? There's nothing with me and the attorney on the invoice, so I don't have a place to put initials or anything else. So it, it seems overkill, I don't recall it ever happening before with a, uh, previous city manager. Don't take this the wrong way, I, I've applauded you before in public, I'll applaud you now. I think you're doing as good a job as possible with an interim city manager tag. But one thing I'm very frustrated by is that we closed applications for city manager two months ago, and we haven't interviewed our candidates yet. So this, uh, this thought process of hiring a different firm to help us hasn't worked the way I hoped it would, because I, I would not wanna apply for a job and then sixty days later have, you know, the death silence of, hey, we haven't gotten back to you yet. I hope he, you know, I'm worried people move on with their lives and don't wanna do things. So I'm hoping we can expedite as quickly as possible, uh, finding a permanent city manager for Palmer, so you can go back doing the job that, that you do well and hopefully love, and the other department heads can go back and doing, doing their job. And we can have a person truly that works for the council, and when we say it's not, I, I'm walking on eggshells because these are my staff colleagues and I'm gonna go back to that role. It's a difficult spot to be in, there's no doubt about it. But I, I do think this signing and initially in an invoice that I had absolutely no part of, one could argue like, oh, hey, you have to, um, verify that we had a special city council meeting. Why would I verify that? That's for the city manager.
Council member Alcantara?
Yes.
We, we kind of, I thought we'd kind of agreed that we'll, we've got another agenda point to bring that up under, so.
Well, I guess we'll take that up, but I think it's something the public should hear as well, not just have something said in the executive session. So, uh, we gotta change some things, gotta respect each other, I agree with everything that you said. But we have to get back to, um, council sets policy, city manager enacts policy as told by the city, by the city council, voted in by the city council, not told. When a four out of seven vote, that's what the city manager has to do, not anything different than that. And that's, uh, you can tell, we'll talk later about other instances of, uh, of why I don't think that's occurred the way it should. So I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate you standing up for your staff, but I'm, I'm bewildered, because I sit here and I go, what, when, when, when have I ever had anything? When is anybody, I haven't, I haven't witnessed it, I haven't witnessed anybody being berated or given such difficult questions that they shouldn't be able to respond. When you're paying six-figure department heads, they should be able to respond with answers or at a minimum say, we'll get back with you with, uh, with the answers. Thank you.
Uh, council member Cooper?
Thank you, I'd like to get back to some construction problems, issues. Uh, you sent a letter to Mike Brown regarding the booster station. uh, regarding the uh, booster station. So related to that is Station Thirty-Nine is gonna be built up the road. Uh, has there been any kind of contact with the state uh, regarding if there's gonna be any road issues? Are they gonna put a intersection there or what was gonna happen?
Mr. Manager?
That's a conversation between this, that the state and the borough are actively having right now. I think the state is reluctant to give them access to the road at the moment. Because if they do so, they'll, they will have to give, and that, and that portion of the road is set to be modified by, it's set to, there's construction coming up on that section of road. And if the state grants the borough access, there might be an issue where they have to maintain that access. So I think instead of doing that, the state is probably going to have them use the public road that's next to the station and then grant, grant a driveway access after the construction is over. That's my understanding of, of how that's gonna work. That, that could be completely inaccurate, but that, that's how I understand it.
Council member Best?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. So we had an email uh, sent to us.
This, this is a manager's report?
Yes, this is, this is from the manager. And it was in response to some emails that had uh, gone in and questioned the invoicing aspect. And it shows where um, things get heated in the discussion uh, with a council person. And um, I'd like this to be on the record, uh, this, this email to be on the record. And also I'd like to ask uh, for the manager to bring before us, the council port, to bring back before us uh, the concerns that he expressed to us today. Um, what I'm hearing is, is what I view as hostile work environment situations. Um, and this is something that we need to nip in the bud. It needs to be brought to the, to the public's eye. Um, we also have some recent um, activities in Facebook where we have a council person berating the city manager.
Point of order.
Openly.
Point of order.
Council member.
Does he have a question?
Manager's report, so.
This is on the manager's report. It has, has to do with those.
Point of order.
So I'd like to ask for council support.
Okay. To direct the manager to come back to council with.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. This is the city manager's report.
This is germane to that city manager's report and the allegations that he had stated. It also has to do with the allegations that have been stated from the dais about our inability to pay invoices.
Okay, so he's, he's asking for support for direction to direct the city manager to bring back.
The findings.
The findings about this. Okay, is there support for that from council?
Yes.
Okay.
I missed what the direction is for and all that.
Yes, madam attorney?
Um, yeah, for, for that directive, um, we're using some potentially legal implying terms. So I would just ask for a clarification of the scope of the direction for all council um, before they vote in that, or, or before you have the supportive to whatever, scope.
Well, I guess, we're try, we're trying to direct the manager, and I guess at this point I'd say that he should maybe confer with the attorney to see which direction we define, you know.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Don't we need a vote on this? We had to have a vote on the last thing. I think we have to have a vote on whether this is something we want to proceed with.
Okay, uh, direction, um, I believe takes a couple council people.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
To direct the manager to come back with information. And I was corrected when I tried to have a vote on that, if I remember right, madam clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, council member Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I do believe that two people sitting at this dais um, actually went to our city attorney with concerns that the investigation that I brought up wasn't valid because it wasn't voted on by majority of council. But now again, Mr. Best gets to bring forth an investigation with only council support.
I guess I don't recall this. Uh, madam attorney?
Um, perhaps I can offer some clarity. Um, so and I was gonna address this in my report briefly, but um, so I believe it's uh, city code two oh seven and it's either oh oh seven or oh seven that allows for two sitting council members to direct um, the city attorney, the city manager, or the city's clerk to prepare legislation. Um, now legislation is defined as any ordinance, resolution, order. So um, in essence, a uh, a study, an analysis, anything like that could be preparation of legislation requiring the two. Um, the challenge in, in that interpretation, and it was brought up um, previously, is that if that implies um, uh, so that's simply what the code is. Code traditionally trumps policy. The city of um, council also has an ethics policy and a code of conduct, and the ethics says that if there is an ethics investigation, that requires a majority vote. So that is in conflict with code, um, the, the ethics piece. So because in essence, you could prepare legislation that's going to have ethical, um, an ethical analysis component of it based on the two um, council members coming forward. So I think that's what's causing a lot of the, the um, confusion is the, you have conflict between policy and code in the event that they both touch ethics. Um, and code traditionally always trumps policy because code's been voted on. Um, but that, you know, that would be really to council's discretion. Like, you might want to clarify and scope, okay, if it involves ethics, we think it should be a majority. Or we believe that this is all within the scope of code authorizing, tasking clerk, attorney, manager to prepare whatever you'd like, and that's what you've traditionally done. So I, I hope that offers a little bit of clarity.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, councilman Best?
So in the manager's um, reports, we have often heard of situation that it has arisen that the manager informs us about something and we give direction. Is this something that happens, madam attorney?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the man, the manager informed us that there was situations that were involving personnel that another council person even said that he was, he was shocked to hear some of this stuff because it's nothing that we're privy to. I'm very intrigued in it, and I'm asking to give support to him bringing the information to us at a later date where he can then clarify exactly what he's talking about. That's what I'm asking for. So I do not see why this is any different than anything else that we've done before in the past.
Madam attorney?
Uh, to the mayor, um, I would agree with that analysis. Um, I just want to clarify that if it, it may because ethics does address in, interactions with council, staff and so forth. So it may indeed address things that are defined in the council. So just for all council to be aware that um, in the event that you, two of you, as authorized by code, task any one of us three to do something, and it might engage with ethics, that you are authorizing that to go forward. Now obviously, myself or the clerk or the manager would bring back a report. Um, if it does involve specific individuals, that will be something that we'd have to figure out. Protecting that and those bases if that may need to be an executive session for reputation, but um, if it does involve um, ethics, that is gonna be something, whatever you, result you take from that information would be voted on by all members. And, and um, that's why the code was established the way it is. So just understanding process. So that would apply then to the um, the analysis that I was request, I was tasked with last one by two individuals that might have, um, in the event of whatever comes out of that, that might also touch upon ethics. And then you're authorizing that that can be done by two.
Thank you.
Okay. So the manager feels like he has direction that fits in there.
Could I, could you repeat that, please, council member Best, so I have that? What's your direction, exactly what's your direction is?
To bring back to council a, a better understanding of the situations that you were informing us about, about what as in I, I had stated, what I view as hostile work environment situations.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions uh, for the manager about his report? Okay, we'll go on to the mayor's report. I've got a written report. Um, explained some of the, some of what's been happening or almost happening with the Matsu Valley planning for transportation. Um, so is there any questions for me on my mayor's report? Okay, city clerk's report.
Just wanted to let the council know that the absentee by mail applications for the October election are available at the clerk's office and the city, and available on the city website. And also, at this point, there are five council members and the city manager who will be attending the conference in, uh, June of next month.
The AMO conference in June.
AMO, great.
Okay. Is there any questions for the city clerk about her report? Madam attorney, do you have a report?
I do, um, and I will be brief. Um, since I'm gonna cross off my last one, since we do have clarification of code two point oh seven, tasking the attorney, the clerk, and the manager. Um, I have two updates that I'd like to share with council. Um, one is regarding the case which was Mitchell versus the city of Palmer. Um, uh, the city of Palmer put forth a um, a, a motion, and that was granted by the I can talk judicial, um, by the courthouse. So that case is now dismissed with prejudice. Um, the city of Palmer um, won that case in essence. Um, that just went through, and so that's done. It was a sovereignty issue. Um, and so I can give the city an update on, on that process in the future if they would like, but I just wanted to let you know that case is now closed. Um, we received the order from the courthouse, uh, is dismissed with prejudice. Being dismissed with prejudice means that it cannot be brought back. Um, without prejudice means you can bring the same issues back to court. But with prejudice means it cannot be brought back, so the case is over and done forever. You shall not pass. Is he in here? No, okay. Our commander has Lord of the Rings fanatic, so I was looking for a quote for him to do sometime today. Um, the other update is that this past week, um, I were, met with Mr. Hanson and Combs Insurance. Um, and uh, the result of that, we met for about a, a little over an hour, um, in discussing some of the specifics. I requested of um, Combs Insurance, this is in terms of our um, in, in the insurance, Combs represents the city, the insurance process regarding the library building. Um, I requested that they um, come and do a report. Um, I asked for um, specific numbers, a timeline of events from like the cave-in going forward so that the council had a complete snapshot of all the pieces, um, some of the definitions and requirements. Um, they should be available to do that on February eleventh, um, is what they said. So I, I did send out an email to the, the mayor, the clerk, and the manager requesting that that be put in. Depending on the detailed amount of it, because it probably will engage litigation strategies, that may need to be an executive session initially. Um, and then the council can, especially while they may be negotiating numbers, and then it could be, um, that would impact the finances of the city and so a justifiable executive session reason. So just wanted to let you be aware of that.
All right, is there any questions for the attorney on her report?
Deputy Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. I, I know you touched on that briefly with so the last meeting, uh, councilman Hudson had brought uh, forward a um, a motion that got seconded to do an investigation with uh, councilman Best uh, on ethics complaints. Um, I think in light of recent events, I'm very curious to see where we are with that. It sounds like that did not pass because we needed to do a majority vote on that. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir. So for, to clarify, um, I was, and that's one of the questions I wanted to clarify, that I was proceeding on that, the scope being the, the references that were brought up, I think at a district meeting. Um, I want to say section twenty-five or something, um, at a district meeting. I have begun collecting statements on that. Um, it was my understanding that I'm authorized to do that by the two individuals based upon code. Um, that uh, the scope of that though solely was for those um, um, questions and analysis brought up in the last meeting. So I have begun collecting statements.
All right, any other questions for the attorney? Councilman Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, pulling my iPad here. So um, recently we passed uh, legislation that will allow us to record executive sessions. And in that, it, so this is for ordinance number twenty-five zero zero one. In that, we are at six E. And it says, disclosure of discussions, the context of which the discussion occurs during the executive session shall not be disclosed in any manner at any time by any member of the council or staff except for the city attorney for the sole purpose of providing legal advice pursuant to an order of a court compliant competent jurisdiction in proceedings filed to determine competence, compliance with AS forty-four sixty-two, three-ten um, State of Alaska Open Meetings Act. There has been postings of what might or might not have happened at that meeting that we had last week. And so I am reluctant to go into executive session if we have somebody who is sitting on this dais that is leaking information as to what did or did not happen in those meetings. So I'm not comfortable going into executive session tonight, at the next meeting, at any, anytime forward until this gets investigated.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you please clarify um, what meetings you're referring to? That you said something was shared?
Yes, ma'am. The, the last meeting that we had, the last executive session that we had.
So, um, I mean, that, that's, but from a legal analysis, uh, so if I understand what you're saying correctly, um, the laws that you referenced regarding disclosure were implemented in January. So they were after the meeting, the recordings are all after that meeting. It, um, we don't, law doesn't apply retroactively, it goes forward.
Just this last meeting, so we, we enacted that, that legislation, and then we had an executive session.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, right.
And in that meeting, in that meeting, things that might or might not have happened, because I'm not going to disclose what might or might not have happened.
Understood.
Have been posted and discussed.
Well, um, how I've seen that element handled, um, so part of the research that I did for implementing the disclosure part and catch a can is seeing how other states handle um, uh, executive session, if, if potential information from executive session has been released. And there's the analysis of, was it released, um, proving that it was released, the impact of, of what that had, and if there was a violation of confidentiality. So that's something, um, that's certainly uh, available to council if there's a concern about a previous uh, executive session um, being released. But that should not have impact on the workload or the process going forward.
How, how, how can we have confidence in the integrity of an executive session when we have already gone against the rules that we have and it clearly states, may not be discussed in any manner at any time by a member?
Well, I think that, that goes, well, that, well, that goes back to your innocent until proven guilty concept, you know, so it's like first there would need to be clarification that that actually occurred. And then you have professional confidence on the same level that any of you are sitting up here. Like, there's also the confidence that you're going to say something nice that you guys are not going to comment on my race, or the fact that I'm an inept woman, or anything to that effect because you are capable professionals. So I mean, it's, you're, it's going back to your professionalism and ethics and, and, and whether or not the confident, the council has confidence in that.
So councilman Best?
Um, I, I have no confidence in, in the system, in, in the performance of um, uh, and I, I can tell you that I'm not the only one that is aware of this. I can tell you that our city manager is aware of this as well. And we have a breach right now, and I will not go forward with an executive session, not tonight. Not, not until we go forward. I will walk out of this meeting. I will not participate in the executive session because I have zero confidence right now.
Is there a legal question? I mean, my, my response. Is there a legal question? I mean, my, my response to that would be, again, you, in the previous meeting before that and the meeting before that, w- with potential OMA violations, you asked me to look into and, and do an analysis on whether or not something was done. I mean, at this point, you were making statements or hasn't been, and there may be valid, but there hasn't been any form of investigation or anything that would, um, create a reason to stop the rule of law that you have already voted on in implying an executive session. So, um, I, I mean, yeah.
I'm willing to submit it on the table right now. You can take a look at, take five minutes, take a look at it.
That would be up to the discretion of council, but my, uh, my other result of that is even, so the next thing you would look at is impact and damages. So even if that has occurred, um, then is the consequences of, of a potential leak that may have occurred by staff or by council members or by anyone in, of confidential information, does that stop all work going forward forever? Like, what is, where is the resolution and the solution in that? You know, that's, you know, when you're asking me.
I, I get that i- i- completely. Um, it's, as you read, that says any information, any discussion. I mean, it seems very cut and dry to me.
So the, the response to that then would be some sort of, um, i- i- if, if, if there was a violation, there's an investigation, then there's a consequence. Um, it's rare that the consequence is, um, the consequence is usually related, um, if it's valid to that individual that might have c- completed it, not to the entire council or the city as a whole stopping all future work. Um, you know, so like the punishment needs to fit the crime type of thing. Um, just in terms of basic philosophy for, um, looking at laws, uh, to your question.
Okay. So for now, let's move on to audience participation. Uh, council meeting rules project your right to testify and be heard even if others in the room disagree with you. Council meeting rules also ensure that those attending may ex- express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. Please be respectful during audience participation. No disruptions to city business or threats of any kind will be allowed. Individuals who cannot follow these guidelines will be removed. Any threats against others could result in criminal prosecution. Please sign in and state your name and you have three minutes per person. So we will open audience participation.
Chief, the mic's probably off to separate.
Yeah.
That guy just turned it off. Oh, my bad, sorry. He's just got that title.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council. My name is Dwayne Sheldon. Um, I'm the chief of police and I wasn't sure, I wanted to send an email out to y'all, but I figured that would probably be appropriate. So I wasn't sure really what the form was. I know the city attorney works for y'all and, uh, that she has an evaluation coming due. And I wanted to let you guys know that as one of your directors, that, um, I've had the opportunity to work with her for the last, past two and a half years and have found she's been immensely helpful with me in my department and handling legal issues within my department. Had the opportunity to work with several, um, attorneys throughout my career and it's very easy to get the, well, you can, but you may or you may not, very wishy-washy answer. Um, she's very direct and stands by that, by her decisions. Um, I'd be happy to talk with any of you if you guys, um, want more information or whatever, I'm available. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation?
I'm not gonna try and sit at this chair. It's gonna be bad. I just wrote this. I don't want to be cheesy. Hey, I'm Rich Clark, a city of Palmer employee. Um, I just want to take a few moments to talk about the city attorney, Sarah Heath. Uh, I think it's no shocking fact that the individual employees at the city of Palmer are in support of Ms. Heath, given her courage and decisions over the last few months. I further note that she's remained essentially silent given these circumstances. Uh, I'm an investigator. It's the bottom line, job description of what I do. Um, I've been doing it, uh, for a long time at the city of Palmer exclusively. I investigate crimes. I see those accountable through the moment I put handcuffs on them to the moment that they're sentenced in court. Uh, all I do is that and with that work, I interact with litigators on a daily basis. Work with prosecutors that are stern and assertive, but I also work with prosecutors that are timid and weak. I go up against defense attorneys that are dedicated and steadfast and others that are frail and unable to commit a proper legal defense to their client. I've gone to judges with evidence worth its weight in gold and been told to go back and try again. I've watched victims continue to be victimized due to miscarriages of justice, the likes of which I wouldn't wish on my worst enemies to see. The legal profession in, uh, the legal profession is similar to all the other workforces in America. It's dying a slow death. What remains is reminiscent of lions and antelope. I've met a lot of people holding juris doctors in my life. Ms. Heath is a lion. Um, just like the rest of us, Ms. Heath is here because of a profound compassion for our work. She loves this community just like we all do. If we wanted to, we could go make more money elsewhere with less investment in our work product. You can replace the person, but you can't replace that and you'll be fighting an uphill battle trying to replace her. That's all I've got.
Anyone else for audience participation? Actually, do we have a signup list going now? Sure, thank you.
My name is Hillary Schwager and I'm a resident of the city of Palmer, as well as the evidence and records technician for the Palmer Police Department. I'm here tonight to share my experience working with the current city attorney, Sarah Heath, as a city contractor. I understand that the study may not be the most ideal for referencing specific examples and I apologize for that. However, I was not given alternative avenues to express my opinion and gratitude, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so here. Under the direction of Chief Shelton, I've worked closely with Attorney Heath for the past two and a half years. Together, we have processed complex records requests and reviewed established and rewritten policies for both the records and evidence programs at Palmer Police. Throughout that time, Attorney Heath has been consistently accessible, providing clear and concise direction. She stands by the advice she gives, which has not always been my experience with past city attorneys. As someone who often works under tight statutory deadlines, access and availability are critical to me. I cannot afford delays. Additionally, I rely on the legal opinions I receive to be not only accurate, but also to ensure the department, the city, and I are not placed in jeopardy. If the council would like more detailed and specific examples, I would be happy to provide them in a more appropriate and private setting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim Leach.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, different subjects, so I'll be brief as there's important business ahead.
Go ahead, start with your name just for the record.
Certainly, yeah. Tim Leach, uh, for the record, and I'm a Hatchapass Avalanche Center board member uh, in my volunteer duty hours of the day. Um, I'm here tonight to speak, uh, in favor of, uh, the action memorandum number 25 dash 008 that you have, I believe, on your agenda this evening. Uh, we appreciate the, uh, the manager's review of our request for funding to help us with operations and educational expenses. Uh, as most of you know, since I've been here before in, in previous years, uh, I think we were contending at that time with some hot sauce challenges if I recall correctly. Um, in previous years, uh, the, the mission, uh, that I stated still holds true. Uh, you know, Hatchapass Avalanche Center is a non-agency, uh, nonprofit that is here local to our community. Uh, we are the only entity that provides information and avalanche advisories for the Hatchapass Avalanche area. Uh, sorry, Hatchapass area. Uh, and it's really vital, uh, you just experienced a historic storm. I'm sure most of you are, uh, aware of the road closure that happened up there and that was because of information that we were providing to the Alaska DOT and state parks. Uh, so we really do provide service to the community, uh, that is of, of a safety nature. Uh, we feel like that is critical. Uh, I hope you agree. Um, but certainly the funding request that you have in front of you helps us fill some of the coffers to help us do the job that we do to help provide public safety information out there. If you are interested in later questions, I'll be around, um, but I really appreciate your time and appreciate the past support. And I, uh, hope you'll consider our request in this current year favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Goforth.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Goforth. I am a writer. I'm also a retired postal EAS 20 employee and I would never have said anything in public like the manager did and from a quasi-military stance today. I also want you to know that prior to having someone tell me I had to put a piece of cloth on my face that restricted my breathing, I had no idea what cities did. If somebody hadn't asked me what a city did, I would have answered in one line, "They manage the city." That was it. But I have since found out so much and I now do so much interesting research that I want you to know that what I've found on the library is highly entertaining and it starts with, let me start with the, uh, profess, uh, what do you call them? Hang on, president of the Wasilla Library Association who spoke in front of you and this is what she said about the library.
To exceed 15,000 with Wolf, Wolf Architecture for the schematic redesign of the Palmer Public Library. So this is, you gotta start with your name. You have three minutes. And you don't have to sign up on the list, but we'll write your name down so we don't duplicate. You, you don't, that's okay. Just start with your name.
Jean Truszkiewicz. Um, so about eight months before the roof collapsed on your library, members of the city came to the Wasilla Public Library and met with our staff to talk about expanding the library.
Did you hear that? Eight months before the roof fell in on the city library, members of this Palmer city management met at the Wasilla Library with our staff about ways they could expand the library. Isn't that interesting? Then we find out that in November, the Matsu Borough put out a FEMA guide on Facebook warning residents and businesses to clear the snow from their roofs due to excessive snowfall. And then in February 15th, the roof of the Palmer Public Library collapsed. And I don't know if you remember my talk at the budget hearing over the depot, but I said that if the insurance, uh, insurance amount comes in very small, that means that it was not demolishable. This building, the library building, was fixable. And I also said, why on earth would a city manager decide to move the city Community Development Department to the library? Why would he do that? That made no sense. And as a library, as a researcher and a writer, it needed to make sense. And I have now found, because I did a FOIA request and I have all the emails and I have all these thumb drives and I had lots of time since my mother passed away last month, that's why I've been missing, to go through this. And look at this one from Gary Wolf. Good afternoon, Brad. I'm Brad Hanson. I want to follow up with you on the library modifications we were requested to make. We have looked at a variety of options for adding the Community Development Department to the second level and have enough developed that we would like to schedule an appointment to review each of the options and discuss the advantages and disadvantages of each. Please let us know some times that work for you and the city manager and we will set something up.
That's your time.
Gee. Thank you.
Cindy Hudgens.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Hudgens and I'm a resident here of Palmer. And I come to these meetings pretty much every time we have one. My, I'm talking tonight about the importance of getting a real city manager, I mean, hiring a city manager. But here's the issue that I find in it, and I've heard this asked numerous times over these meetings. Where are the unvetted applications for these managers? Who hires for the city manager? Is it the interim city manager? No, I don't think so. Is it the council? That's what I thought. The council was supposed to hire the city manager. Who then, I listened to him in his little speech tonight when he was talking about sometimes employees have to be reprimanded in public. Oh. What employee was being reprimanded tonight is seems more to me like the boss was being reprimanded. Do we reprimand our boss ever? I don't think so. Too much latitude is given to this interim city council manager or city manager. Way too much latitude. How can you people be expected to make a good choice on a city manager if you cannot even look at applications, if you cannot even vet these people for yourselves? Why do we have some leftist HR company from Texas? From the AML doing our vetting? Doing our HR? Texas, do we not have anybody credible here in Alaska that could do HR? And why is our police department not running criminal backgrounds? I don't know about you guys, but I don't trust this HR place. I mean, they've already let you know that that, what is his name, Scott Mendoza or whatever, have never been fired? And yet he was fired from Seward. And then, I don't remember where the other place was, but he was fired as close as 2024. September of 2024. What other gems do we have on this list for city manager? I mean, okay, I know, I'm just the fringe out here talking that really doesn't know what I'm talking about. I'm not stupid, people. Thank you.
That's your time. Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mike Malewski. I live here in beautiful downtown Palmer. It seems that you've spent an hour and a half and were roughly, and we're getting to the meat of things. Not that what you've discussed isn't significant in one way or the other, but I want to lend my support such as it is to what Tim Leach said earlier regarding the Hatchapass Avalanche Center. We report regularly, uh, morning time, like conditions throughout the area, um, particularly those conditions that will affect people from Palmer who tend to go up to Hatchapass and beyond. This year has proven to be an extraordinarily different year. Not that the last two years didn't have their own kind of, of problems associated with snow. But I can tell you that we research, uh, as much information from as many sources as possible, individuals and so on. But the Hatchapass Avalanche Center, uh, is a premier organization. They do an excellent job. They're available. There's nothing like their reports. So I, I absolutely support what they do and urge you to do the same kind of thing. I also note that later on this evening, you will be talking about, uh, the trip to Saroma. And, uh, I mentioned something, I think, two weeks ago when I was, was here about the need to act. It is January still. Uh, the trip is in July. That seems like a long time of, away. But I remember at one point in a January, not so long ago, a former city manager said, oh, I'm going to retire. I'm giving you a lot of notice. And as Mr. Lacandra pointed out, we're still working on that. The plane will fly away in July. I've managed to obtain two seats already. I can tell you the process is, is simple. You put your money down and get a seat, but the seat you get depends upon how soon you act. So if you're in any way thinking of going, by all means, I would, I would make those arrangements and take care of it. And it's also polite, uh, so that I know that the recipients in Saroma do a tremendous amount of planning. Uh, they invite you to, uh, share the kind of things you'd like to do so that you're going to be staying with someone who will be able to, uh, provide you with a, a wonderful experience. So, uh, I look forward to hearing your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Uh, Wesley Arts, Palmer Bar. I think almost all the people in this room really care about this community. A lot of people and A lot of people have done stuff that aren't necessarily good, but they think they're doing it to, for the best of the community. Kind of remember that. We all care about the community. We are all trying to do our best. You may not like what someone else is doing, but remember that they're trying to do it because they do care for the community. We've all made mistakes. To err is human. It's just like, please remember that. We're all trying to be good people. Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Hi, my name is Frank Bell. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but given that you have the executive session coming up to discuss the attorney's contract, I guess I should preface this by saying I know about as much about being a lawyer as I do about being an astronaut or an NFL quarterback. But one thing I'm pretty sure of is that what's happened here in the past few months as far as the city attorney's role is probably not considered typical or ideal between everything that happened with the city manager and trying to think of a way to put it tactfully, dysfunction on the council. There's been a lot of requests made of her that are not normal. And just in attending these meetings, she seems to be a very articulate person. She's had to have a lot of courage and a lot of guts in the last few months, and she's handled that with grace. So again, I know absolutely nothing about being a lawyer, so take what I say with a grain of salt. But I think you guys are pretty damn lucky that she's even still here, to be honest, let alone willing to do this again potentially. So I think you should keep that in mind going into executive session. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for audience participation? Okay, so no one will close this audience participation. We're kind of ready for a break? Okay, let's take a short break. Okay. We'll come off of our break, and next we have action memorandum. So action memorandum number twenty-five dash zero zero eight, approving a city council, approving a council community grant to Hatchrapass Avalanche Center in the staff recommended amount of fifteen hundred for forecasting and education. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Do we need any staff information or comments? Council member Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. Number one, I mean, I think this is such a valuable thing to be giving our minimal grant dollars to. I made a comment, I think, two years ago and maybe last year, that it seems crazy to me that we give fifteen hundred dollar grants only, which is far less than one percent of this organization's budget to the Hatchrapass Avalanche Center, and we give a same number or sometimes higher to like car shows. I got nothing against car shows, but I got more in tune with the work that these folks do and actually like, you know, saving lives and putting out information that can potentially save lives. So I wish we were giving them more money, and I definitely hope everybody will vote to approve this minimal fifteen hundred dollar request. I know they have to request more to get more, but I just think that in the future, I'd recommend maybe asking for a bigger amount. So, thank you.
Mr. Manager.
If I may comment on what Mr. Alcantara just said. The Hatchrapass Avalanche Center requested five thousand dollars, and I reduced that to a fifteen hundred dollar because that's what has been done traditionally in the past.
Thank you.
Council member Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to support what my fellow councilman just stated. It is a valuable safety issue, and I would opine that potentially we maybe look at future funding within our public safety budget, and maybe it's something that we allocate, maybe have a memorandum of agreement of some support. We have the discussion at our next budgetary session. But I would support this fifteen hundred dollars and also maybe suggest that maybe that's something that we think about maybe later on. Thank you.
Council member Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would support that councilman Best. Additionally, I just wanted to say my husband works in the civilian search and rescue field, and I know that as much as he loves doing his job, he really appreciates, and other people in his field really appreciate the work you guys do to keep them from doing their job. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to echo the comments made by the other councilmembers. You know, the work that's being done, especially in lieu of the last avalanche is very important, and especially with the expansion of ski talk. You know, it's going to become a huge economic driver in the region, I firmly believe. And so the work you guys are doing to keep everyone safe is a very necessary public service. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion, right? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Council member Graver?
Yes.
Council member Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Council member Alcantara?
Yes.
Council member Best?
Yes.
Council member Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we tried to group. Would it be number nine, number ten, seven, sixteen? Oh, okay, you're going with those numbers. Basically, all of the liquor and alcohol ones. So do we have a motion to approve our group of?
Still moved. Second.
Whatever word we want to put in there. All right, is there any questions of council or comments? Councilman Best.
Just ask the clerk if there was any communications or anybody complaining about us reapproving these.
No, there has not been anything received by the clerk's office.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Best.
Also, if I can make a comment. You know, these distilleries and manufacturing inside our community with some of these businesses, I think that's a good way for us to continue to have an economic stimulus. But I'd also like to be remiss if I wouldn't also said that there's a couple of them that are making some root beers, that are non-alcoholic root beers, that are very amazing and encourage everybody to partake in those things that are being produced here locally. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, we grouped together two, three, four, seven, eight, and ten, is that correct?
Nine, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I think we included nine as well, which is a liquor license.
I thought councilman Cooper left that out, or councilman Best?
Oh, okay.
Or no? It is? Seven, eight, nine, ten? Okay.
Okay. All right. I'll just add a comment. I just learned that in the one for the Palmer Golf Course, the borough gets to comment about it, and apparently they charge us for that. And I was just going to comment that we don't charge our establishments for doing it. We don't have a process fee for that, even though the borough does that to us. I just learned that today. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Council member Best?
Yes.
Council member Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Council member Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Council member Hudson?
Yes.
Council member Graver?
Yes.
Ananimos?
All right, and I believe the ones left are number five, action memorandum number twenty-five dash zero one two, authorizing the city manager to extend the contract for professional audit services with BDO USA LLC for one additional year. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from council on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Best.
We've utilized this company for a while. We've got a great rapport with our finance department. They speak very highly of her, and I'd like to continue this relationship with confidence. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Council member Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Uh, next is action memorandum number twenty-five dash zero-one-five, confirm the Golden Heart Lifetime Achievement Award recipient. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved in second and, and just for those, um, information on this is we'll actually be giving this award out at our next meeting, the first meeting in February, but this way we have it all approved and ready to go. Is there any questions or comments on it? Okay. Oh, well, councilmember Alkantra.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Yeah, I just think, um, I, I really applaud my fellow councilmember for her actions and making sure that, uh, that Cindy was nominated and moved forward. You know, sometimes things slip through the cracks and glad there's, uh, folks to kind of, uh, pick it up, pick up the ball and run with it and, uh, I, I think a very, very deserving recipient and, uh, and I thank my fellow councilmember for bringing her forward. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hudson?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, uh, I believe we got all of the action memorandum, correct? Okay. So, there's new, no unfinished business, new business. Discussion regarding forty-fifth Sister City Anniversary Trip to Saroma, July sixth to seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Part of what's happening is, uh, I, I think we've already heard that Soroma Kai, the nonprofits, already started purchasing tickets and they're even planning, I think, a, a meeting this next week for kind of orientation for those going. I believe the mayor is planning to go. How, uh, how, how, how are we going to do this here? Councilmember Alkantra?
I don't know how we're going to do this, but I'll start off with a, a few, uh, comments of, of this. The, uh, Saroma trip for the, for the students, uh, they go around June first to June twentieth. This Sister City Anniversary Trip is July sixth to the seventeenth. I, um, I would suggest that, uh, you know, the city be willing to pay for the mayor to attend, obviously, and the deputy mayor, and I wouldn't see it, uh, going any further than that out of, out of the city coffers. So, I would think that if there's going to be, uh, two members of this council to attend, um, that event, I think it should be, um, the mayor and, and deputy mayor and, uh, if things fall apart between now and July sixth, then, uh, then we can address if whether or not we need to send a, uh, a second, um, member of council to the trip. I, I personally do not put myself up as a person. I, I, even if my daughter wasn't going over there, it's just, uh, it's too long of a, of a stretch to be gone. I gotta, I gotta job, job. So, it's just, it's too long of a stretch and as much as I would love to see Japan and, and kind of hold it over my wife as I made it to Japan before you did, I think, uh, the best thing is, uh, to advocate for yourself, Mr. Mayor and the deputy mayor to, uh, represent us well, um, on this trip to Saroma, July sixth to the seventeenth. Thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm definitely happy to go and reprieve the city. It's, it's a, you know, huge, you know, event to be able to go to Japan and, and Versailles Palmer, it's a huge honor. A little bit on the fence because I know that my, uh, my two, my two daughters are gonna all, so I was trying to figure out how that, how that would work because they are just absolutely enamored with, uh, with Japanese culture. And, um, I mean, how would, I mean, I imagine that it would just be like one of those things where, um, with Saroma part, that would just be in Saroma and then, uh, let's say we wanted family to go along on the plane ride at least and they would just be dumped off somewhere else, I'm assuming. I was trying to figure how this, uh, kind of thing would work.
If I remember from a discussion I had with Mr. Molesky that I think they've gone and, you know, done the Saroma thing and then they've stayed a little bit longer and, you know, he and his wife did, did some other, you know, other traveling, so. Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Best?
Um, I, I don't think we need commitment from the deputy mayor at this moment. I mean, they think there's a whole bunch of logistics that happen in, in, in that and whatnot, but, um, I, I would support, uh, that the two being paid. In the past, was it the mayor and the mayor's spouse that we had paid for? I can't remember what it was in the past. Like, I, I-
I, I believe on the last trip, the city paid for the mayor and the, and the mayor's wife, um, but I, I've told staff that I was, I would not expect that. I would do the, I would be paying for my wife's ticket.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Counsel, but has the deputy normally been paid for? I don't want to break new ground here if it hasn't been, been paid for.
If, if, if I may-
Come, councilmember Best.
The one that was canceled, uh, the trip that was canceled because of COVID, that was actually the one where we had really kind of blown out the budget on and it was going to be the mayor, the deputy mayor, and I believe two other councilmembers that were planning on attending. I, I was not a fan of that, but that's, that's kind of what it went down. But they ultimately ended up, that one ended up getting canceled anyhow.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, um, along the lines of what councilman Best had to say. It's been because of the COVID cancellation, it's been at least a decade, maybe it's been fifteen years since, uh, we've sent somebody over there and so, um, I know because deal a little bit with Sensei Swick and, uh, what's going on with, uh, the students, both middle school and high school. Uh, I know they're, they're looking for a good delegation. I'm happy to hear that other members of our community are going, uh, on their own nickel. Um, and so, I think, um, having the mayor and the deputy mayor makes a lot of sense and we should probably cap it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Having gone to Saroma, uh, a few years ago, uh, if anybody is really thinking about going, I would recommend definitely that they should go. So, it's a great experience. The people over there are absolutely lovely. They treat you with the highest respect and it's just a phen- it's a phenomenal, uh, visit. If you get the opportunity, please, please go.
Councilmember Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I would also, I, I don't believe that we're, we're wanting to limit any, uh, participation from any councilperson, uh, to participate on their own dime. It just, you know, coordinating with the, the Saroma folks as to availability because I know that there's a certain limitation on the number of participants within the activities. That, so we just want to make sure that we coordinate that.
Any more discussion or? Uh, councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I just want to clarify specifically that is it the, the Saroma group or is it the city and then how many people were we expecting to take from the council or expecting to go from the council? Can, can I get a clear answer about that?
It looks like two is the number in the- Mike Moleski is our resident member of the Soroma Kai. Would you, yes, if you want to come forward, we, we can use- Yeah, well, I'll go ahead and suspend the rules to, uh-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Moleski, and this is always kind of an interesting process. It was fifteen years ago, it was, and the aborted collection of people doing it. As you pointed out, on Thursday, sixty-eight, right here in this room, there'll be a meeting where all of those people who are intending to go will meet face to face. There are a number of reasons why that's important. One, um, we're, we're accepted there and treated as a group with individual placement, as I pointed out earlier. The, the idea, and we have hosted people who've come from Saroma a number of times to, it's every five years we go back and forth. The idea is that, number one, the Saroma effort is driven by the city. The city takes this on as a project. When people come here, the city participates, Palmer has participated in the past, but essentially, um, groups such as Palmer Soroma Kai and, and other individuals work to place, for example, uh, the delegation in various homes. So, it's not the responsibility of the city to have someone dedicated, whether it's the manager or someone else, to, to do all of that. But in Saroma, they actually do that. So, it, it's important to have that sense of difference. But because of the way in which, uh, people are treated with respect, uh, as visitors there, it's always good to have, uh, a couple of people from the city who represent the city there. And then the rest of the delegation represents the community in one way or another. So, my wife and I are part of Palmer Soroma Kai, but we're community members that are going and we have, uh, Delaina Johnson, who is, uh, obviously a, a member of the Alaskan House. She and her husband are going, but they're not going necessarily as official representatives of the state of Alaska and the House. They're going as community members because they live here. And it takes a while, it took me a while to get a sense of what all that means. But what I would say, the first and most important time to get answers or get a feeling for it all would be Thursday, uh, between six and eight P M. because you'll have everyone here, Carla will be here, she is very familiar with the intricacies of, of the way in which it's, it's good to, uh, be prepared. They in Saroma request a detail, uh, as much as you want to reveal about who you are and what you like to do, because they want to ensure that your stay will be a, a good one. And so, we were placed with a fine family and enjoyed it, uh, and I'm sure, uh, councilmember Cooper had that same experience. So, bottom line, an official delegation, your choice, because the total number that we've been playing with is about twenty-five. Now, when push comes to shove and you actually put your money down and everybody has cleared the decks and they have time to actually do it, I would guess the number will drift a bit down. It might be twenty, but it'll be somewhere in that range. Happy to answer any questions, if you had any.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Moleski. So, um, gonna make a wild assumption here and you correct me if I'm wrong. Sensei Swick, who's going with students, June first to the twentieth, is also going, uh, with the Sister City Anniversary Trip, July sixth to the seventeenth. Is that correct to your knowledge?
To, to my knowledge, that is correct. She is a, she has a nickname in Japan, um, and basically it's referencing a tornado. And she, she, she essentially is very active, as if anyone knows, Carla knows. And I, I would just say that, um, I, I might have mentioned this before, she actually owns a home in Saroma. Yeah, and, um, and has spent years there, uh, very familiar with the place, but she's devoted and that's why when we look at this kind of, of exchange program, this, the Sister City Exchange has gone on for over forty years and that's one aspect of it, but the student exchange, uh, is a parallel piece. Your daughter, others who are involved in, in that, uh, takes a lot of work, uh, to find chaperones, et cetera, and to develop and make that happen. So, yes, she's doing the one and the other, uh, that way.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Was it the sister's name?
Yes.
Okay.
Six o'clock here.
Yep.
One of us will probably unlock the door.
Yeah, one of you guys.
Yeah. All right. So, I guess we can move on to record of items placed on the table?
Document from Jackie Goforth.
Okay. Uh, next is audience participation. We've got a new list up there. We'll open audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please? Sign in, start with your name and, uh, okay.
Hello again, I'm Jackie Goforth and there's a recall out for the mayor right now and I want you to know it's already passed, the signature is required. And I also want you to know that the reason that it's getting such response is because we expect trust and transparency in our leaders. We really do, okay? We haven't heard the insurance amount on the library yet, but what I have found out in my research is that it was actually recoverable. Do you know that? We had to pay, you're now talking to something that's interstate, which means the FBI is involved, and I'm learning stuff out there on the street I don't want to know, okay? When I go out there on the street and talk to people about councilmembers, I find out things I don't want to know. I found out somebody else was sleeping with somebody and somebody else was cheating on somebody else's spouse and you heard about it the last recall and it was very embarrassing. Now I'm hearing about people who have illegitimate children, et cetera, et cetera, and I really don't want to hear all this. I don't want to recall people. I don't want to be out there, but I have met the most wonderful people on the planet and they want trust and accountability in their leaders and nobody knows what's happening with the library. Seriously. It could have been recovered and it wasn't. You wanted to damage it on purpose. That's what it looks like. That's what it looks like. I mean, somebody needs to contact the FBI, if not me. I'm serious. And then they added to it because Brad Hanson was involved in adding the Community Development Department and maybe it's because that's on the north side of the runway where they needed to expand it and put in that paving. Did anybody consider this, like the airport manager? Why was it the Community Development Department that was getting moved? I mean, there's so many questions with all my research. I can't, don't have time to go over it all. People have been doing things behind the scenes and they're wondering why we question? In fact, when people are up here saying that they're hearing from their department heads and, and being treated poorly, maybe it's because the people are finding out things and it has nothing to do with the people in the dais. I, I wasn't here the last two meetings, I don't know. I just know Brad Hanson was involved in moving the community development building and the community development building is part of the north side of the runway, isn't it? I mean, I don't know, is it? And isn't that the part on the budget meeting that you guys couldn't discuss because he was taking the ninety thousand dollars out? And how come every time we talk about the insurance, you have to go in executive session so nobody gets to know? And if you're going to do transparency and trust, could you please put the clock back up? There's a three-minute clock that happens at the borough, there's a three-minute clock that happens at, at Wassila and we used to have one. So, you never know when you're going to run out of time. Thank you.
That's your time. Anyone else for audience participation?
Cindy Hudgens again. So, funny thing, I'm talking about the interim city manager and there he is, going out of the scope of his purview once again and taking a bid that was put in for consideration of the council for five thousand dollars and himself deciding to lower it to fifteen hundred. for five thousand dollars, and himself deciding to lower it to fifteen hundred. Why didn't any of you council members say, oh, he wants five thousand? Well, hey, let's consider that, let's have a vote on that. But I don't know. What the heck? He is your employee! Good grief, people! You've got to harness your employee. Because I'm telling you, he's running wild. Doing his own thing. He's gone rogue. When he first came in here, he didn't want to make any decisions. He didn't want to be responsible for any of that stuff. He was just interim. But he's getting pretty comfy now. Comfy cozy in his little office. And acting like he's the boss. And I would be very careful taking any, any information from this H.R. group. Do it yourself. I mean, we don't want to end up with another jelly, right? Can this city sustain another jelly? We already know that we don't have the money to cover payments on this monstrosity of a library. And so, I, I should tell the city of, of the residents. Come on, your taxes are gonna go up. I mean, sales taxes have been increased previously for, went up from two percent to three percent. I can't remember what bond it was. But I'm sure that you guys can remember. Never got lowered again once that bond got paid off. So are they gonna tell you, oh yeah, we're just gonna raise your taxes, we're gonna raise the sales tax until this bond gets taken care of? Do you think they're gonna lower it? No. Oh, no. They'll just wait until the next bond and raise it again so you can pay for it. Because the city can't do it. Anyway, I'm just fed up with all this garbage. And thank you for letting me talk. And I also appreciate the people that got up here and, and spoke for the city attorney. Because I know there are some people up here that water out just because they have ill feelings towards her. And that should not be part of it. Her job is what's being looked at, not her.
That's your time. Is there anyone else for audience participation? Okay. We will... Please start with your name, and you have three minutes.
Kelly Nacadeoffey. I'm here tonight out of concern, the future of our city. I want this council to succeed, I really do. I want the leadership to be strong, ethical, entrusted by the people that they serve. But for that to happen, you must address the challenges, and that threatened the integrity of you guys. You know, the city attorney is expected to provide fair and unbiased legal counsel to the entire council. So the role of the city attorney is to represent the city as a whole, to provide fair and unbiased legal counsel to our city. However, the billing records, it show, it shows a very troubling pattern. The city attorney has worked closely with, and almost exclusively, with three specific council members. And that is, raises serious concern about the exhortation, or ex parte communications where legal advice was provided. Additionally, the city attorney advised the staff to invoke the whistleblower act. I sent you a copy of the whistleblower act in a statement that was written to you guys on twelve seventeen, in that it clearly, clearly states what, how you can invoke the whistleblower act. That's very troubling. Executive sessions, they exist for a reason. They provide space for sensitive matters to be discussed without inside influence protecting both the city and its employees. You guys should be able to go behind closed doors and be able to speak freely. It should not be leaked. Not one thing should be leaked outside of it. That is happening, and it's happening all the time. You have public remarks about the interim city manager being made by a council member on Facebook. That is derogatory, it's posting negative remarks. That's not leadership. It, it's, it's just, the city deserves a leader who can handle matters with professionalism and respect, not through personal attacks. Social media, not once council member should be on there doing that. That is just, I'm not here to point fingers necessarily for the sake of conflict, but the potential, I believe the potential of this council, but the body has to function as a whole. And you've got to investigate these wrongdoings. You completely dismiss that you have a city employee. I found out that this poor woman, I mean, she's a single mom of four kids, and one of you council members leaked a letter of concern to you? And you don't find that appropriate? You must investigate.
That's your time. Is there anyone else for audience participation? Okay, we will close audience participation. Next, we have council member comments. Councilmember Alcantara? Do you have any comments?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank everybody that came out and participated this evening. Now, it's always fun to watch what occurs, and there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to change, for sure, up here at this dais, and for the better of the city of Palmer. It does start with us getting a, a new city manager that can move forward with our direction. And hopefully, we're gonna have some discussion about that sooner rather than later. I do think there's, there's plenty of things that, that need to be addressed. And I appreciate the folks that came and, and gave their opinions and their testify, testimony about our city attorney. And it takes, takes a lot to do that. And I'm glad, glad to hear that, on both sides, what, what occurred. Probably the most important thing I could say is that my condolences to Jackie Goforth for losing her mom. And you have been missed, and believe it or not, in the last couple of meetings. It's always, you bring a lot of eye-opening testimony to us on a regular basis, and it is appreciated. And as a unabashed mama's boy, I, I can't imagine the pain you're going through. And, you know, moms are, moms are the best. They glue that whole everything together. And I wish you the best as you try to recover from it. And to everybody that came out tonight, thanks, thanks for your time. And hopefully, you know, I've been saying this, twenty twenty-five is new year, new path. We gotta start looking forward and quit looking in the rearview mirror. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna make some progress this year. Just stay in the course and, and hold us accountable. And definitely, everybody needs to be held accountable for their actions. But I think twenty twenty-five is gonna be a, a good year. And have a good evening.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, I'm really, I am sorry, I lost my mom twenty-one years ago. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't remember her. So best of luck. On a different topic, I want to remind people, we are a home rule form of government. Which means we are a manager form of government. We are not a council form of government. We provide goals, direction, and objectives for the manager. And, and he takes those goals and objectives and moves forward and, and gets them done. When we hire the manager, the clerk, or the attorney, we are putting our, we get them in that, that our trust and our faith, and we know that they have the ability to do the job. And, and personally, I don't want to see an invoice, because that's a manager's job, particularly in this case. We've given him that authority to move the budget forward and, and get things done. I don't think that all of a sudden needs to come back to us. We have to remember that we are, we are not the governing body. We provide direction, and we kind of guide the, the three employees that we have in the way that we want them to go. But we don't sit in their office and tell them and give them individual direction. That's why we hire them, we give them, we give them the, the bold outline on what we want you to do, what we want you to accomplish, and, and let them move forward. That's what they're paid to do, and I think that's what we need to remember. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank everybody that came out tonight. Regardless of the fact that we can't reply during audience participation, we do listen. I'm currently speaking for myself. I listen to every comment and consider it. I also wanted to thank and congratulate the newly promoted members of the PPD. I got to attend the Fire and Rescue Banquet over the weekend, and that was really encouraging and really great to see, to be part of that. And then I, I did want to, I guess, give a shout out to the MTA Events Center staff. As our interim city manager mentioned, I knew that they were having difficulties, and I, I'm really impressed with them. And I didn't realize they were sleeping at the center to keep it going for the ice to be there. So I, I really appreciate that. And I'll have to do that in person later. So that is all.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As first, the first thing I would like to point out is thank you so much to everybody who brought things forward. I also, too, find it intriguing, as Councilman Alcantara is bringing up, things that people bring forward to the council. Tonight, what I thought was most intriguing is that Ms. Kelly mentioned that she had seen the private Adobe document payments. So I'm just wondering who leaked that to her, because that was supposed to be private within the council. Also, as many of you are aware, Councilmember Best is currently facing an open DUI case, and despite this, has been involved in another DUI incident. To make matters worse, on January twentieth, he has been summoned for driving with a revoked license. An act that not only shows a blatant disregard for the law, but also for the safety of this community. This behavior is not just a legal issue, it is a matter of public safety. We, as elected officials, are held to a high standard. And our actions should reflect the values of the people we serve. The fact that a sitting council member has been repeatedly involved in reckless and dangerous behavior is nothing short of embarrassing and deeply inappropriate. Let me provide real-world context. Imagine families who live in our city, the parents who entrust us to make decisions that impact their children, the workers who rely on our leadership to maintain a safe community, and elderly individuals who may be more vulnerable to the dangers of impaired driving. Each time someone gets behind the wheel, under the influence, they are putting every single one of these people at risk. Whether it's a pedestrian walking across a crosswalk, a family in another vehicle, or a child riding their bike. The potential for tragic outcomes is real and frightening. We cannot, as a council, stand by and let this behavior go unchecked. It is not only an embarrassment to the community, but is a betrayal of the trust that has been placed in us as elected leaders. It undermines the fabric of what we stand for and what we should be promoting: safety, responsibility, and respect for the rule of law. Let me also remind you that just one meeting ago, I called for an investigation into his actions, actions that were already under scrutiny, and yet the behavior continued. The investigation was not a formality, it was a call for accountability. As Councilman Alcantara said, it was time to check yourself before you wreck yourself. And then the first break after asking for the investigation, instead of sitting back and considering what people had said, he immediately tried to have words with Councilman Alcantara in council chambers. That in itself is embarrassing for this council. If this behavior continues unchecked, we send a message to our constituents that there is no real consequence for actions that endanger the lives of others. I believe it is time for us to make a decision. We cannot afford to continue allowing dangerous and reckless behavior to represent this council or the people of our city. I cannot in good conscience allow that to stand. I am calling this council to immediate action, whether it be for Councilman Best's resignation or for a vote of no confidence in sanction for illegal conduct. Our community deserves better, and we must hold ourselves accountable to the highest standards.
I'm gonna have to second that, as I said before.
Second, there...
We can put in executive.
What's that?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alcantara.
Would it be possible in our executive session to see what kind of avenues we could take? And I think expulsion or resignation might be a bridge too far. But as we talked about two weeks ago, and I agree with what was just previously said, the speaker reforming, something needs to occur. We cannot bury our heads in the sand and pretend that it's not an embarrassing stain on the city of Palmer, not just council members, but on the city. And it's, you know, it becomes statewide news. And so, it's, it's out there. And I think with something we need to address in executive session, it, something, some kind of intervention needs to occur. And I'm willing to do that in executive session, not here, if that's what happens.
I have a question of the attorney who was in the session.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Best?
Again, we are having allegations levied at a council person in breach of our code of ethics of the processes.
Well, if I could address the original question regarding executive session, Shelley, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can't just host a new executive session without it being publicly noticed for the purpose in that. Procedurally, the two things I can reference is, two council members can always put forth legislation. That can also be a resolution, or an order, or we're saying something to be done, to be voted on at the next one. They can also, two legis, two council members can task, myself, the manager, or the clerk, to prepare legislation. So those are two immediate items that you have in code, the authority for council members. And I don't know if that circles, if that answers your question. Is there a more clarifying point?
Councilmember Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of the ethics code is that we are not to be attacking each other from the dais. Those are separate legal matters that are in the courts that are being handled. And so, I again am wondering as to the purview of this body to discuss personal issues in this manner, because of our ethics code. There is a process, if there is something. And right now, I'm being, you are, been tasked with an investigation of comments that was said at a partisan event where we are a nonpartisan community, government function. And I'm being investigated as to my personal opinions expressed at a partisan event. And the city is now taking it, you are being tasked with investigating those comments. And then now, a personal situation is being discussed on the dais as an attack and retaliation at me from members of this body, which that is against our ethics to be able to cast dispersions on a person's character from the dais. And so, I'm asking for you to step in and get, give an opinion that supports the ethics of this body in a managed and appropriate manner.
Madam Attorney?
The ethics code refers to a code of conduct. So the scope of ethics would have to do with the actions and words spoken by a council member as an elected official. So as an elected official, you are, you know, so the, the conversations that have all been brought up to me regarding questions of ethics in the past several meetings have had to do with text message, or not, sorry, Facebook posts, whether or not those would be considered personal or professional. But there's certainly Supreme Court holdings that those could, could go one way or the other. There is also questions regarding actions, conversations that have been privately held at functions or private. or private. So I think the scope of the ethics code has to do with the words and the actions of a councilmember. There is not a distinction in your current ethics code that has to do with categorizing something as personal and categorizing something as within your this is only, you know, I'm now have my council hat and you can address me on these issues, and then I have my personal hat and you can address me on those. The ethics code does not have a definition regarding a separation of categories of those. It has a list of words and actions that are appropriate and agreed to. And again, the ethics code is a policy. So procedurally, the ethics code and I apologize, I went to a funeral beforehand and I forgot my iPad, so I currently don't have that, but if the ethics code speaks to that, an individual can bring it up or a majority of the council, if you're just gonna do it under the ethics code, the majority of the council can vote to sanction. So yeah, and it all has to do with their positions. And the only reference it does make to ethics is that the council will, members will avoid personal benefits. So that's the only distinction with with personal and that they'll act in public interest. So there is not a definition in here that says this is personal and it can't be addressed. In terms of there is a, there is a statement, I'm sorry if I may, you asked me procedurally. There, the very last page of Conduct says, "If no action is taken by the mayor or deputy mayor, alleged violations can be brought up to the full council." It also says, "The majority of the council may call for an investigation, and these sanctions are alternatives to any other remedy that might otherwise be available to the council." So it's self enforcing, expressing the standards of conduct, and it is silent into specifics. So there's a lot of discretion to the council how you'd like to handle that.
Councilwoman Best.
So my, my point was, in the process, if you look at our ethics code, the first, first part of the process is if a person has a problem, if a councilperson has a problem with another councilperson, they're supposed to go to them and have a discussion. Second is that they inform the mayor and then there's another opportunity for discussion. It's not to sit there and jam up on the, on the dais and start leveling allegations.
If procedurally, it says mayor, mayor or deputy mayor, then could be brought to the full council. That is also implementation within using the authority being the ethics code. That doesn't include the code authorities that two councilmembers can put forth any legislation or they can task for preparation of legislation.
Correct. But in that ethics portion, we have not followed the procedure of that there's a discussion first with the individual, then the mayor is brought in, and then if they're talking about bringing legislation, well, bring the legislation. But that is not what's being discussed right now. Right now, we have allegations being leveled at an individual councilperson from the dais.
So then the avenues that it does state, I'm just gonna read it for the public. So I do want to clarify a couple of things, though, that when you're putting forth legislation, which a vote of no confidence, a sanction, ISO order, any, you know, a recognition for someone's accomplishment, that's all followed under ordinance law. I'm sorry, ordinance, order, resolution underneath section 2.07. So that is by code the authority and the full discretion that council good, and that has two individuals to bring forth legislation. That's one avenue to handle any kind of issues. Second avenue is that two councilmembers can task the clerk, myself, or the mayor to prepare legisla, I'm sorry, not the mayor, the manager, I was pointing it, to prepare legislation. The third policy, not code, procedure that is implemented is the ethics code. And that says that councilmembers, this is under implementation, we're at page five of the Conduct. "Council members who intentionally and repeatedly do not follow proper conduct may be reprimanded or formally censured by the council. Serious infractions of the code of ethics or code of conduct could lead to other sanctions as deemed appropriate by the council. Individual councilmembers should point out the offending councilmembers perceived infractions of the code of ethics and conduct. If the offenses continue, then the matter should be referred to the mayor in private. If the mayor is the individual whose actions are being questioned, then the matter should be referred to the deputy mayor. It is the responsibility of the mayor or deputy mayor to initiate action if a councilmember's behavior may warrant sanction. If no action is taken by the mayor or deputy mayor, then the alleged violations can be brought up with the full council. When deemed warranted, the mayor or the majority of council may call for an investigation into alleged ethical violations. Also, should the city manager or city attorney believe an investigation is warranted, they shall confer with the mayor or with the council. The mayor or the council shall ask the city manager or the city attorney to investigate an allegations report findings." So those are all the options under the title Ethics Code. That doesn't include the other two avenues that are defined by code, which is up to the discretion of council to pursue doing whatever they'd like regarding legislation.
All right. So it seems clear we haven't been following the ethics code and procedures at this point. So Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I just wanted to definitely say it's important that we follow an ethical code with making sure that we're not attacking each other at the dais, but I just wanted to state that we're trying to help. Whenever one of us does something that makes the news, like in this press release that my wife informed me about yesterday, it puts shame on the council. When any one of us does something that puts us on the news in a negative light, we represent shame. We represent our community. And, you know, I think it's important for all of us just to remember that. That we're all representatives, we're supposed to represent the best of Palmer. And I know that we're all people, we all have our faults. You know, I have my plenty of faults for me. But we should always be working to help Palmer be better. I switch gears, but Jackie, I'm sorry to hear about your mom. That, that, that's rough. Just to thank everyone who spoke at the, at the meeting. I got to represent the city in event for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and it was an amazing event. I was very happy to be there, very honored to be able to represent Palmer there. And also to the Chamber of Commerce for letting me speak there, along with our interim city manager, John, to give kind of a state of the city address. It was a very amazing event and I, hopefully it showed everyone the bright future that Palmer has. A lot of times we get kind of caught up in the day to day, but we're in a good, we're in a good trajectory. We're going forward, we're getting better. And, and I would like to ask for council support to have a meeting on the week of the February 10th to go over, start the interview process for the city manager position. I just think we just need to, need to move on this. I would like, and I believe that February 13th, this year, or the week of the 10th, as soon as we can do with our code and of having enough notice. But I think that if we at least do the, the first interview and then we can get the background checks after that, that's okay, but I think we at least need to, need to do the first series of interviews over Zoom for the first three or five candidates on the HR's list, just so we can get the ball rolling on that. Because I'm concerned that we're taking so much time that some of the applicants are gonna be withdrawing their application, and we're gonna call them, they go, "Oh, I applied for that?" I don't want to be one of those things. So just like to get council support to get that meeting scheduled.
I would support that.
Thank you.
So that was for February 10th?
Uh, just the, the week of the 10th, whenever is good with everybody. Just, I, I think that's the soonest is that, Shelley, was it 13th or the 10th, just anywhere in that one? Yeah, I think I wrote down the 13th.
A special meeting.
Yeah, a special meeting, just, just to, and so we can schedule the first round of interviews with you know, the top three to five applicants, I'm flexible in what other council wants. Thank you.
Can I add on to that real quick?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. We're getting a, a report on the 11th, right? So I would hope that we would do this after the 11th, so the 13th. Thank you.
Just, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just, thank you. For the record, I don't know if I'm available on the 13th. Could we maybe have some options presented for today or, okay, thank you.
I didn't get to comment. Did you get to give my comment yet? Jackie, I, my mother's in failing health, so I, my heart goes out to you as you're dealing with your grief. I understand how important mothers are. I'd also like to congratulate our Golden Heart Award winner that we've selected. Been great service to our community and that, that's a good thing. Also, I'd like to talk to everybody about, I think we might have an opportunity with our current federal balance that there is with the Republicans holding House and Senate and the presidency. And Begich was recently put on subcommittees for airports and railroads. And with that, there's been some conversations that's happened with Alaska Railroad that if there was maybe a designation of the spur line of the rail line and special authorities and or opportunities presenting over a economic kind of piece for our downtown area, we might be able to get funding, we might be able to get special grandfather rights and operational opportunities pushed through. I think the, the economic stimulus into our community for tourism could be, it could be a game changer. It could also allow us to be able to get our railroad crossings fixed in a manner so that it'll still allow trains to come into the downtown area. And I, I think, I think that we need, really need to coalesce around that idea of then helping the 557 and maybe give them a place to locate here in Palmer and that there again brings in tourism. It can be tied in with the farm systems as well. But it also takes care of our situation where we've had railroad crossing issues with safety. And, you know, we might be able to have a walking path next to it if we can get Congress in to allow us a, a very specific window because it's not on a main line anywhere because it is a spur branch. I think that there is real, I think it's, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity for us. The Alaska Railroad said that they would be amenable to have these discussions that, you know, over the years that it's been really a nonstarter to try to develop the railroad tracks because they don't have the money to spend on something that they're not gonna use that much. But if we can find an opportunity and synergize with Congress and Senate, that there, if, I, I think, I think it could happen. Also, with that, within that same caveat is our airport situation where we have that fence line that we've been talking about having to move over the years, and this was something that was requested by FAA for us to put in many, many years ago, and then regulations changed and then all of a sudden it became an issue that, that we were noncompliance and, and there was gonna be a big cost for us to do that. Well, there again, Begich is on the Subcommittee for Airports, and maybe we can get that fence line grandfathered in and, and some additional support for us. So I'm going to ask for council support to direct the manager to kind of flesh out some of these ideas, bring it back to, to the, the community and, and this body so that we can have the discussion and potential opportunities coming down the path.
Second.
Thank you.
And then actually Thursday, 3 to 7, there's a transportation fairytale. And many of the place, many of the groups that were mentioned should be having groups.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if Councilwoman Hudson was given a chance to finish her comments. I'm just I thought Deputy Mayor Tudor was replying to what we were talking about and then he went into comments and so just checking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, you just started going and I just thought, just let him get finished.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you. So then, if that's something that we want to discuss in executive session, then I also think that, that that's something we would need to add to the public notice right now that that's something we're gonna be discussing in executive session. Or I'm just, somebody, people had brought up discussing it in executive session, so I'm just trying to make sure that we're going about it the proper way, or we're gonna discuss it now. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can clarify the question. And I may not have been accurate in that. I, I don't think we can add it to the executive session of tonight's meeting because there's not enough public notice of that topic.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Uh, yes, Councilmember.
Yep, thank you. I had asked for resignation of Councilman Best or for sanctioning, and then it was brought up to talk about it in executive session because he would prefer that, but that's something that would have to get on the schedule. And my concern is that this behavior is just gonna continue and continue, so maybe even us considering a sanction on, on speaking on behalf of the city of Palmer outside of these council chambers at least to protect the city for, at least until the next meeting or until we can get something on the schedule. Again, I can see that, you know, people are trying to move on the meeting without allowing me to finish, so I would like to figure out you know, where we're gonna go with this, at least hear from my councilmembers about that, and then also then finish my closing statements, please.
So are you asking for an agenda item on an upcoming meeting then?
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for council support to take action to initiate a sanction with Councilman Richard Best.
Second, but what does a sanction look like? We have to talk about that in February 11th's executive session or what are we, how do we proceed with that? I guess that's a question for the attorney.
I don't know if you need to have an executive session. So procedurally, you have, I just want to say the, the three avenues to correct behavior, whatever that looks. The code is silent to what exactly a sanction is. Not the code, I'm sorry, the code, the, the policy, the ethics policy is silent. It just says the council can sanction. What that means is at the discretion of the council. The one limitation I can off the top of my head think of is that you are all elected officials and the city of Palmer, even as home rule, does not give up sovereignty of citizens. Citizens voted to put you in as an elected official, so council cannot remove an official. If council chooses to do, to act in other ways or to make a public statement on behalf of the council, there's been a lot of creativity done with councils all over the United States in the last year or two in terms of sanction, so that would be at the discretion of council. Again, the procedural way to do it, if, if, you know, is to, if you wanted an investigation to justify a sanction is what the process looks like in the ethics code. If the council would like to prepare legislation, two of you can do legislation. You state what that legislation is, you vote. There doesn't need to be an executive session to discuss it, it's a vote. The same thing would be as if you were texting the clerk or myself or the manager to prepare legislation. That would be legislation that would be assigned, put on an agenda, you know, and then what council does with that is at your elected power.
Councilmember Hudson.
I believe that Councilman Alcantara had asked a question, so is he allowed to follow up from, with his, after his question?
Councilmember Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I read the ethics guidelines, you know, talks about if somebody is personally offended, they should call a point of order to the mayor. I didn't see that occur either. You know, something has to happen, something needs to be done. I mean, it's like this, this thing, we, we did this a year plus ago and said, let's let the process play itself out. The process is that one's been pleaded out, one is still in, these aren't, these aren't allegations, these aren't, gee, did this stuff ever happen or couldn't have ever happened? Point of order. Okay, thank you. So, so
Okay. Okay.
Things skinned and call the point of order, that's what we need to do.
Well, no, no, we are all as US citizens allowed to have our day in court. I happen to have a situation where doctor has, my doctor has testified that I had medication on board that compromised the situation. Okay? Now, that is a proceeding in court that is happening right now, okay? You guys are wanting to hang me on something that you have no idea of what's going on.
Councilmember Best. TMI. How about we direct the attorney to research?
Right, right before my performance review, awesome. Sorry.
How, you know.
How sanctions have been handled in the past, type of thing, that does delay stuff. I, I can certainly provide that for you, that does not preclude council from putting forth legislation on an agenda.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would call that the council, I would call for support to bring forth legislative, legislation to vote to sanction. Excuse me, was there something?
Councilmember Hudson.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought that Councilman Best was speaking, I, I forgot, and I was called on. To sanction Councilman Best. I would refrain from asking to fully strip the entirety of voting privileges out of respect for the will of the voters who placed him in this position. I don't ever want the constituents to feel that their voice has been undermined or that we've disregarded their right to decide who represents them. However, at the same time, as Councilman Alkantra has expressed, we have an obligation to take swift and responsible action when it comes to the safety and ensuring that our council maintains the trust of the community. Actions have already compromised the trust and I believe it is our duty to address this with appropriate measures. Number one, that Councilman Best should be prohibited from traveling at the expense of the city or representing the city. This council or any position in, his position in any capacity. To not attend meetings outside council meetings as a council member, to speak on behalf of the council or participate in any city-sponsored events, including AML conferences or similar gatherings. And that every vote he casts at this dais should be subject to careful review. And he must recuse himself from voting on any matter related to public safety, including fire, EMS, police, their budgets, their contracts, and any related issues. His involvement in those decisions is a clear conflict of interest and for the safety of our community, he should not have a say in matters that directly affect it. Those are the two sanctionings specifically that I'm asking for. So representing the city outside of this dais and not voting on anything having to do with public safety, thank you.
Councilmember Alkantra.
Second, or Gray, Grayber second.
You've got your light on.
Yeah. Yeah, my light on at the comment of Councilmember Best, no one's trying to hang anybody, we're trying to help somebody.
Well, we're just, okay.
Comment is, if we're gonna vote, Mayor, if you're gonna vote, let's call for a vote.
No, this is to prepare legislation. So you've got two people, two councilmembers asking for it. Who?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, then I call for a vote, thank you. If, if we, if we wanna clarify it that specific, so then I recuse my statement of preparing legislative and I ask for council support and a council vote to sanction immediately, thank you.
I believe legislation is supposed to be prepared and then noticed at a regular meeting, so I would call that out of order. If we're.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask the city attorney a question? Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
My question is, does it not state that the, the city council can choose to take, I'm sorry, I don't have it, it's, that the council can choose to take action? Does it not state that the city council can choose to take action against a councilmember when we've brought up the actions once before, which we did at the previous meeting? And then the actions continue after it is brought forward, that then we can bring forth action?
I think that, you could look at that, but I think the challenge with the ethics code is it's silent to so many things. The action I think referenced in there is, so I know that there's the vote that's for a majority of the council for an investigation. An investigation has findings and then there could be results after that, depending on the findings. And then my other avenue would say would be outside of the ethics code would be legislation that council can do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Hudson.
Oh, yes, thank you, okay, then I guess I received a second for a motion for preparing legislative, legislation for next meeting to be voted on. So is this gonna have to wait until the eleventh, is it the eleventh, is that what?
February eleventh would be the next regular meeting. You, you have to, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my interpretation, and granted, I'm not the attorney, but it's my interpretation of the code of ethics is that what, what the majority of the council votes on in this case is an investigation. Perform, either you or the majority of the council can ask the attorney to perform an investigation. And until that investigation is complete, I don't see where we can even come up with any idea about what a sanction is. Cause we don't even know whether or not, you know, whatever the allegations are, whether they're, they're published or not is immaterial at this point. I think that we have to go through an investigation and that's what we're, what we're actually voting on and, you know, and telling the attorney what she has to do.
If I may.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I would request some clarity on that, I, I'm hearing three different messages. If I could, so just to go down the different avenues, you know, council themselves can, two of them can call for a special meeting. They can call for, and they can draft specific legislation. Then to, the, the other avenue is two of them can task myself or the clerk or the manager to draft legislation for what would be the next upcoming meeting. Then there's the ethics code that also has a process, not clearly well-defined, but that policy has a process in place. That says that the majority of the council can vote to task the attorney to do investigation with the assumption that the findings then would be indeed pursuant to what was done. But those are all three unique Mario Kart races that offer, sorry, I looked at that, my nephew plays Mario Kart, so that's like my visualizing. You can go down red, you can derrive down blue, you can go down green, or they can be concurrent in terms of what the council would do. So I'm a little confused because I've been told, okay, hey, inform us on what sanctions look like and do a report on that. But that wasn't second, and so I don't know the scope of that, then, then also possible legislation on this. And then also do we vote on a majority for me to do investigation to do something? So all three right now have been mentioned towards me, so I'm asking for direction from council on which color lane they would like to pursue. Or if they're gonna concurrently do some.
Councilmember Hudson. Your light is on.
Yes, thank you, I will clarify, I am asking for council support to prepare legislation to be voted on at the next meeting for sanctioning until. The hearing is completed. Or until a recall process has been voted on, so I'm asking for council support to bring forth that at the next meeting.
Second.
Madam Attorney?
I can certainly begin to prepare that legislation, I would also in that process need to look at examples of sanctions. I don't know what historical precedent that is. It is unusual for me to, while the council has a discretion to do what they please, usually there's findings that are the basis of something. And so while everything is silent to that, I would say, yes, I could go forth doing that. With the latitude that I could do additional research on sanctions as well and find out if the lack of findings is a barrier, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think Councilwoman Graver had a question for the attorney, if you want.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's not really a question for the attorney, I, I think it would be who the council to move forward with an investigation first. So that from those findings, we are able to move forward with a sanction. However. I believe that putting the legislation for a sanction on an upcoming meeting is wise, because then we can take action as needed and not have to wait further. With that said, I would like to ask for council support to direct the city attorney to investigate this ongoing situation. And bring back the findings to us, and I don't know if February eleventh would be far enough out for, for that to, to work out. But if you had any thoughts on how long that would be until we could have those results?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second.
Madam Attorney?
I can make the February eleventh deadline.
Thank you.
This is something that should be discussed urgently, I think.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I now would like to make my positive end remarks for council comments. Thank you so much for everybody coming out tonight and Jackie, I'm so sorry for your loss. And I look forward to going to AML next month, thank you so much.
Okay. We have an executive session coming up, but I think we'll take a break.